Hello and welcome to the Black and Dyslexic Podcast with Winifred A. Winston and LaDerrick Horn. The show that unapologetically focuses on helping Black and underrepresented minorities navigate the special education process. We want to help raise awareness in the Black and Brown community, remove the stigma about learning disabilities, and provide you access to professionals in the space of dyslexia and special education that you need to hear from.
Hey, everybody. It's LaDerrick Horn here with Winifred. Hey, Winifred, how you doing?
I'm well.
All right. So we're both excited to present this episode of the Black and Dyslexia Podcast. We're actually going to be presenting in a bit different format as opposed to the smaller sort of intimate interviews. This was us, I guess, basically doing the podcast live as part of the fall meeting of the Urban Collaborative. And the Urban Collaborative is an initiative out of Arizona State University. And I've had an opportunity to work with them and come to different meetings that they've had throughout the United States and virtually. And so what's great about this is that Winifred and I were able to talk to a group of three district level leaders. And you're going to hear their voices, you know, as soon as we get into the interview. Before we get into that, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Lauren Casman. Lauren is the Executive Director of the Urban Collaborative. And when she heard some of the earlier episodes of the podcast, she invited us to take part in this town hall, which became an episode.
Yeah, I'm super excited about this because the panel consists of folks from Texas and Baltimore City, right? Now, this collaborative is large and they have their meetings, you know, all across different states every year. And so end up with Texas on the stage and Baltimore City. If you're a parent and you've been researching dyslexia, you know that in Texas, they have dyslexia programs, right? So to hear someone from Texas speak about what they're doing. And then we're physically located in Baltimore City. So then to have our leadership on the stage. So I'm super excited for this episode, you guys, and so excited to share that I stayed up and pulled all night to get this one together.
Yeah, we, we recorded it just a few weeks ago. And I was actually in Austin, Texas after doing a training for a group of diagnosticians who were wrestling with issues around dyslexia now in the state. So we think it's a rich conversation. It'll be of value to the families who are listening. But in addition to that, I think it'll be really valuable for school leaders. So here we go. I have the honor of asking the first question, and it's an easy one. We just would like everyone who are our panelists to say what your names are and then what your roles are. We'll begin from there. Deborah, you want to start us off?
Sure. Good afternoon, everyone. Dr. Deborah Brooks, Executive Director of Baltimore City Public Schools Special Education Department, where we support both students that have an IEP as well as Section 504 plans. We support students from birth through 21. And I look forward to answering questions today, learning what other school districts are doing to support our students as well.
All right. Macon?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Macon Tucker, and I'm the Manager of Special Education here in Baltimore City Public Schools, serving on the left and right of Dr. Brooks. I'm honored to be here today, and I look forward to the conversation. Thank you.
All right.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Gerard Cortez. I have the pleasure of serving as Assistant Superintendent for Disability and Learning Support Services here in the San Antonio Independent School District in San Antonio, Texas. My area of focus is special education, dyslexia, 504, as well as social, emotional, and academic development, commonly known as SEL. But I also have the opportunity to support and supervise our counselors, our social workers, as well as our restorative practices personnel. And so a pretty wide net with regard to support and services. But I am just happy to contribute to the conversation today.
All right, Winifred.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Look, I was taking notes like, oh, you slipped that in with the managing the counselors and the social workers. I must have missed that one. In the spirit of the podcast, our aim is to educate, empower, and equip parents and adults of children with dyslexia. So I just want to kick it off with asking the question around, what are you doing to collaborate and engage with families? I myself started this journey as a parent of a child who was identified. And I want to say I stumbled on the help. I found it by accident. So I just want to know what each of you are doing to contribute to reaching out to parents and engaging them and making them feel a part of the process.
Just jump on in.
I was just going to say, basically, we have a parent support program in place. And basically, that's designed to promote and enhance the overall academic mission of San Antonio Independent School. But we want to focus on strengthening homeschool and community partnerships. Our parent support programs really focus a lot on parental engagement. And they focus on three primary goals, which is supporting students who are at risk by providing those interventions necessary for academic, social, and emotional success, as well as connecting home and school to foster a positive and trusting relationship. Basically, what we're trying to do is make sure that we look at our families as partners in this educational process. Because we know with their support, we're better able to reach the students in collaboration with them. And we can identify whatever academic, social, and emotional learning needs that the students may have.
Thank you.
So here in city schools, we have an Office Family Community Engagement, where broadly, we work with all of our school communities at large, partnering with different organizations to be able to support our school communities. We know in Baltimore City, all of our school communities are different, very diverse populations, and being able to meet those individual needs of those learning school communities. But also here within the Office of Special Education, we have Partners for Success. Where we provide workshops for our families, our families who have children with disabilities, who just have questions. Their child may not have been identified, but they have questions. And so we provide workshops. We provide office hours where a parent can just call to ask additional questions. We also have a special education parent response unit. Where we pretty much filter calls throughout the district to be any type of question that a family may have. And we have the Special Education Citizens Advisory Council, which we work very closely with. We meet monthly. We provide updates to our school communities on both academics, any type of policy changes so that our families are aware of those policy changes, budgets, how budgets impact different programs within our schools and at the district at large. Just to give an example, on Monday, at this CCEC meeting, we will be co-facilitating myself with our chief for family community engagement to talk about the restore, reconnect, and reimagine work that we're doing as we are coming back and making sure that all of our children are reconnecting as we're coming back from this pandemic. And so we do work very collaboratively to make sure that our families are able to get that support that they need for their children.
And Winifred, and LaDerrick, one of the things I'd like to add is that our parent support programs, I had mentioned social workers and counselors, is pretty much staffed by social workers. And that really provides a plus for us because we're able to help parents understand the nature of their child's disability. We also focus heavily on parents understanding the IEP process. Here in Texas, we call it the admission review dismissal process, the ARD process. We assist with referrals regarding medication, emergency food assistance. We look at different types of assessments and provide background information pertaining to that, as well as crisis intervention. And so we are fully staffed with regard to social workers that work in conjunction with special education personnel, general education personnel. We actually also have family engagement specialists who are consistently connecting with our community. We do a lot of home visits. We just do a lot of things to make sure that parents have access to needed supports and services and that they know who they can contact at a moment's notice with regard to anything that they may need.
Can I ask a follow-up? And this is really just out to everybody. It occurs to me like, you know, our podcast is really directed to families. You know, in a, I'm assuming this is probably just to be answered by to say to be proactive. But like, what's the ideal approach for a family coming to the, to the district seeking out help? You know, like, you know, if you've, if you've got a recently diagnosed child, or if you're just moving into one of your districts, you know, what is it that, that you would want to see from families so that they could really be engaged?
So we encourage our families, and we've actually had a number of families to do this. They reach out to our parent response unit. They have reached out and contacted if they're moving into the area or thinking about moving into the area. They reach out and they say, you know, they're interested in purchasing a home in Baltimore City. They have a child who has, is receiving specially designed instruction. They're looking at a particular neighborhood and they want to know what type of supports and services the neighborhood school provides. They've heard about a particular program at a particular school. Would their child be able to access those services at that school? And so the staff and the parent response unit are able to be able to answer those questions. Our staff work very closely with our enrollment, choice, and transfer office. And so collaboratively, we're able to work with that family, answer those questions that they may, that they may have. Just as Gerald shared, we do have a social worker, at least 1.0 social worker in every one of our schools to be able to also provide those additional services and supports to our families. And so if a family is already in the school and still needs additional supports or services, or has additional questions, the, the social worker at that school, along with the IEP chair, are able to answer those questions. But if there are additional questions, they can then reach out to the ed specialist that's assigned to support the school from my office. And then again, the Partners for Success staff from the Office of Special Education, as well as our Special Education Parent Response Unit. If it's specifically around the implementation of that student's IP, or just questions they have about the student, their child's disability. Because a lot of times, the parents just aren't really clear about the child's disability and have some additional questions. And so we're there to provide those additional answers as well.
Yeah. And LaDerrick, one of the things that we do is really try our best here in San Antonio ISD to first and foremost, start with that child find process. Because we know that that is a key component to making sure that we not only satisfy any mandates associated with it, but just making sure that parents are aware of, you know, the possibility of their child being suspected of having a disability. And so we really focus heavily on making sure that parents have information. We have information posted on our website. We send out notices periodically. We do have newsletters that we like to share information. But one of the things that I think is very unique here in the district is that we do have a constituency services department. And basically constituency services takes any type of phone call from parents. If there's a concern, if there's a complaint, if parents need additional information. And what they do is connect parents to specific roles or personnel assigned to each campus. If it's something that reaches the central office level departmentally, then of course, our constituency services facilitates that contact as well. And so we're able to reach out directly to parents and families to be able to answer any questions that they have and to make sure that we can offer clarification regarding any particular programs and services that they may have some additional questions on.
All right.
I want to add, I was thinking along those lines, having been a, still a parent with a child with a learning disability. And I said I stumbled upon help. I worked for the district first. So I had friends who were special educators. I had, I always tell people, I had hard conversations with principals in my role in human capital. So I wasn't intimidated around the table and I knew how to read body language, right? So I kept a stern face during the IEP meeting, but afterwards, I would be a parent in my car crying and feeling like, I don't understand what they just said. Could you please explain it again? So for me, I, you know, was thinking, you know what, I need that psychologist to have a one-on-one with me before this IEP meeting. And we, we had a conversation and we agreed to disagree. But then when we came to the table, you know, she wanted what she wanted. And, and because of my background, it's only because I worked in the district and I had hard conversations. So I wasn't intimidated, even when I didn't know what I was talking about. I literally had books in front of me and would read out of the book. That's just how I was. But I thought, you know, for parents who don't have that privilege of confidence to go at it like that, but they get the documentation, you sign some documentation, and you leave that meeting saying, yes, yes, nodding your head, but you really don't understand. I mean, my daughter was identified in 2017, and I still read her report and I see new information. So can you speak just a little bit about if a parent has a question? I want to say maybe in Baltimore City, I know, maybe you could start with Partners for Success to go in and see Michelle. How do I know her name? Because I've been there. And to say, I need help understanding this. I don't necessarily want to say it in front of everybody on the team, right? I want to, I want to have this question answered and have someone explain what this means. So how would a parent find help like that within the school district? So they don't feel like they always have to go outside of the district?
So that's an excellent question. But I even want to start with the parent that doesn't even know to ask for help. Like, they don't even know that I need to ask for help. Because for some of our parents, they too were a student with a disability and didn't know where to begin to ask for help. And so we've begun to work very closely with our, even our IEP chairs to help them understand to read that body language. And to be able to say, like, when you're talking to a parent, when you're in that meeting, let's be mindful of what you're saying and how that parent is receiving it. You can look at body language and tell if, if they're just nodding their head. If you, if you see someone just nodding their head, then stop and say, let's check for understanding. I was smiling when Gerald said ARD, because I'm a former ARD manager. Like, we haven't used that term like in years here in city schools. And so
AR, ABC, who? What's that?
Admission, Review, and Dismissal. And so, yes. And so at the time, when I was an Admission, Review, and Dismissal Chair, which I'm not going to say how many years ago that was, I used to make sure that I took the time and our team took the time to like pause at different parts of the meeting to say, now, let's make sure that we all understand. And are there any questions? And I could tell if a parent had a question but didn't want to say it right there. So we're really working with our chairs to be able to, to understand and know our families that we're working with. And to also then make sure to say, if you have additional questions, this is who you can reach out to. Michelle Grant Thornton, who is our Partners for Success team member, who does have workshops, who will sit down with you one-on-one. We have like a IEP 101 workshop that we work with families on. Our parent, our parent response unit, we also give out that information all the time. To say, it doesn't have to be about a complaint. It can just be about a question that you have that came up during the meeting. Macon and other team members always laugh and say, Doc, you got to stop saying you have an open door process. Because everyone just either calls you or shows up at your door to ask questions. And that's because I feel like if a parent has a question, they're our customer. I should be able to make myself available to answer that question. But you're absolutely, you're absolutely right. And then again, even if the parent doesn't ask the question, it's our job to take the time out to say, it looks like you may have a question right now. Let's take the, let's pause and see if there are any questions. Because many times, our parents don't know what questions to ask. I don't know, Macon, if you wanted to jump in?
I was just going to say, Dr. Brooks, I think it's, I think it's key around the body language. Because a lot of parents, they come to the table and they, they may feel intimidated. They have a lot of angst. They just have a lot of feelings and emotions that are coming up for them. So just making that space a comfortable space for them, because they're, they're an active member of that, that team. That's a legal team that you're having a conversation about that student. And so providing the parent the tools and resources that they need and building up their confidence is key. Like Dr. Brooks said, our Partners for Success is booming. It's had to move to a larger space because of the work that she has been doing. But if the parent just feels uncomfortable, there are definitely tools and resources that they can, that they have access to, that they can get their needs met as best as possible within our district.
Yeah, I echo much of what Deborah and Macon just commented on. I would like to add that what we really try to do is work very closely with our licensed specialists in school psychology and our educational diagnosticians, who are kind of like first responders with regard to child find. And so what we try our best to do is to make sure that that personnel, those personnel members are well-versed on not just the assessment protocols and those types of things, but also the sensitivity associated with, now, my child is suspected of having a disability and what does this mean for me? Because that is so key and so critical. And so that's the initial point. And then as we go through the evaluation and assessment process, we're able to really work with the parent in terms of this multidisciplinary team to make sure that everybody is providing up-to-the-minute updates. I think it actually starts with our multi-tiered systems of support because students are already engaged in specific instructional interventions. And so as you progress through those particular tiers, then we are able to have much more targeted conversations as far as, hey, there may be a suspected disability. And sometimes that's a parent referral, or that's a staff member's, a teacher's referral. What we really try to do is just, if we're able to really make sure that all of these particular arms are working in conjunction and collaboration with each other, starting with the MTSS process and then focusing on our appraisal process with our LSSPs and educational diagnosticians, and then the ARD committee as a whole. Then we're able to really make sure that the parents are able to connect the dots with regard to identification and then later on, provision of services.
Gerard, if I, if I can do a follow-up question or another question coming from that. I'm here right now, looking out a hotel window in Austin, Texas. And I knew I was going to be on, on camera, so I made my bed. I was laughing with the folks beforehand. I just wanted to make sure. Tucked my bag away and everything. But I'm, I'm in Texas because yesterday I, I spoke to, I think, over 560 of the state's diagnosticians. I'm hoping I'm saying that right. It's taken, there's a lot of impairments from my dyslexia. And, you know, they're now dealing with identifying dyslexia, I think, you know, to a, to a new degree. And during my presentation, I pulled up a slide from our, our podcast. We had an interview with Dr. Julie Washington. I think she was episode four. And one of the things we were talking about was how on paper, dyslexia looks like a very like wealthy, white disability. And this is one of the things I think that's come up through the course of our podcast is that unfortunately, there's a disproportionate number of our Black and Brown children who are being diagnosed with ED, with diagnoses that will lead to some of the more segregated settings and not necessarily the academic supports so that, you know, they can, they can improve. And so I, I'm wondering, just like as far as collaborating, and I know we've, we've talked a little bit about this already, but what, what's some of the work that y'all are doing around the identification of dyslexia? And particularly dealing with some of the biases that we know are sort of built into, you know, some, some of the processes around that identification of dyslexia?
Well, one of the things we, we are really focusing on is, is early screening. And so in Texas, it's not just San Antonio ISD, but in Texas, screening starts as early as kindergarten and first grade is actually mandated. And so you have to go through that screening process. But one of the other things that we, we try to do is to make sure that there is this distinct connection with regard to that multi-tiered systems of support. I know I mentioned that a little while ago, but that is actually key because those are the interventions that really pave the way for making determinations with regard to what students may be experiencing in terms of possibly being suspected of having a disability or gaps in their learning. Right now is extremely important because there's this thing called academic slide that we're all dealing with across this nation. And so one of the things that we've tried to do is to make sure that we are on red alert so that we are not seeing an increased amount of referrals for special education testing or dyslexia testing, just based on the fact that students have not been able to receive access to quality instruction. And so there have been times where, you know, there, there, you know, right now, there are cases where if you're our third grade student, you hadn't been in school in two years, since your first grade year because of the pandemic. And so there's some learning loss there. If you are not fortunate to be in a house, a household where your parents are able to focus on homeschooling and really help with regard to your educational processes, but you're not able to attend school due to lack of vaccinations at certain age groups or just fear of the pandemic as a whole, you know, you can only do so much through remote instruction. And I know every district across the nation did their best to pivot and provide quality, remote learning opportunities for students. But nothing, in my opinion, takes the place of that certified teacher in the classroom that's able to really connect with the student and able to bring the curriculum to the student. And so those are the things that we're really trying to look at with regard to specific student demographics. Again, we're very big on monitoring any type of occurrences of disproportionality. We don't do that just to comply with mandates, but we, we do it because we want to make sure that we're not overly identifying students of color. What makes it interesting in San Antonio ISD is that we have a large Hispanic student population. Our enrollment is pretty high. And so when you look at African-American students, let's just say for disciplinary placements or referral to special education, just because the numbers are so small, it automatically creates this high percentage of those students being served through special education. And in instances where there are disciplinary referrals, there are high instances because there's a smaller group of students compared to the larger student body. And so we really are trying to be intentional, very focused on restorative practices, restorative justice. All of our high schools are very much engaged in restorative practices. Our middle schools, we're trickling that down to the elementary level, trying to make sure that we have the restorative circles process so that, you know, students have an opportunity to really discuss what it is they may be facing or what caused them to display something that violates the student code of conduct. And how do we restore that relationship so that we are not suspending you because of an infraction? But we're trying to restore that relationship and make sure that you can benefit from being or remaining on your home campus and receiving instruction from a qualified teacher in the various content areas. So I think it all kind of goes hand in hand with regard to trying to monitor, you know, outliers in terms of disproportionality. I think much of the work that we're kind of moving toward is about equity. And so I think there are instances of intersectionality that we have to really focus on. And that, and that is something that I'm kind of priding myself on to be able to speak with my staff about being consciously aware of intersectionality and how that impacts certain student groups with regard to their access to education.
Yes. So when we think about the same question here at city school and the confluence of race and dyslexia, when we look at research, it's almost non-existent. When you talk about Black students and dyslexia, and we know that many of our students are misdiagnosed. They either, we look at them as saying, oh, because of how they're acting out in the classroom, they're either diagnosed of having ADHD or an emotional disability because of how they're acting out. Or if it is a specific learning disability, are we really providing the support and services and strategies that they need in order to be able to meet those needs to address the dyslexia? We do have a universal screener for our students for K-3 DIBELS that we have really been intentional about. What I can say, although I never, I try to find the positive in things, and the pandemic has really exposed how systemic racism has shown up in school districts across the country. But I'll speak specifically about our school district. Truly has shown up with the haves and the have-nots. I do have five grandchildren that attend Baltimore City Public Schools. And because of who their grandmother is, they were able to still be able to interact in a way to benefit, although we were in a pandemic. But I was very mindful of those students who did not have access, who did not have access from the beginning to the virtual who did not have access from the beginning to the virtual learning platforms. Although the school district, I think, did a yeoman's job in trying to make sure that we got technology out to students and we've got hotspots out to students. But if there was not a person at home to be able to help those students access this, we still know that there was a divide. The district does have an equity policy and we make sure that all the decisions that we make to ensure that our students, as we're thinking about even when we are going through the IEP team process, when we're working with families, keeping that forefront, using the equity lens as we're making decisions and having conversations in the forefront as we're working with families, doing the disproportionality work. Although we are primarily African-American school district, when we look at how we disproportionately suspend black students with disabilities, how we disproportionately identify black students as other health impairment, primarily ADHD, other health impaired, and even intellectual disabled. When we begin to drill down and really look at that data and to see when we look at what services we're saying that those services need, a lot of them are coming up as needing a reading service and needing reading support. And so I've been challenging my team to say, okay, so what is it? As we are working with schools, is it that our teachers, you know, we're talking about implicit biases. What expectations do we have? Have we really unpacked and used the training around with letters, with DIBELS, to unpack that data to see is it that we, are we really providing those services and supports to be able to identify the true learning disability that the student has? And how are we addressing if the student is dyslexic? And so really working again with our general educators as well as our special educators. I've been doing a lot of talking and working with our higher ed partners and even teacher prep. How are we preparing our teachers to be able to work with our students, especially our students of color? And how are we being, providing those early intervening services and supports? When we think about reading strategies, we always think about the early grades. But then how are we providing these services for our middle grade students? A lot of times our students are not, once they are identified as being dyslexic, it comes up in middle and high school. And then how are we then supporting those students there? Most of our reading teachers are not in middle and high school. So then how are we addressing and how are we able to support those students through a literacy and reading teacher when there is no reading teacher in those middle and high school grades? And so just really working very closely with our teaching and learning office. We have a great partnership with them to be able to say, you know, how are we meeting the needs of all of our students? But having a real focus, we've been in the last two years, I can say a real focus on the intersection of race and our reading strategies and how we're working with our students and our families and our families as well.
And I wanted to ask, because I know from my own personal experience in Baltimore City School, public schools, my daughter was identified with SLD, right? And I remember saying, what is that? Right? What is that? Oh, we're going to give her more time when she's on the carpet? I'm like, well, more time is not going to help her how to read. But these are the things I was saying and I'm like, what is that? And I remember at the very end of the IEP meeting, one of the first psychologists said, oh, well, you know, when students have dyslexia, we normally, I said, oh, she has dyslexia? No, no, that's not what I said. And the psychologist said, well, you know, we can't, we can't mark dyslexia on the IEP. Now, she, this was the second psychologist and she was new to the IEP team and she wasn't familiar with Winifred. Because what I told her was I just called MSDE and of the 24 school districts, 23 used a template and a template has dyslexia, dyscalculia, and dysgraphia. Do you want to, you know, sit with that? And yep, that was me, y'all, at the IEP meeting. I had to, I had to be nice nasty. But no one wanted to say dyslexia. And what I tried to explain when she told me, oh, it's just a generic term, I couldn't really wrap my brain around SLD, specific learning disability. But as soon as I Googled dyslexia, I found support. I found a support group. I understood what Orton-Gillingham was, structured literacy. Now, instead of flashcards, I was tapping it out on my arm. I was air writing. I am not elementary school teacher, right? I was, okay, you know, I was working with my daughter better just because I had that label, that identification. And so in the work that I do with my nonprofit, I get a lot of parents. I don't want another label. Right? I don't want another label. And I'm thinking, okay, well, how are you going to get them help? Because I will speak to that parent that has an SLD label, never heard of dyslexia, can't tell me what interventions the child has received, but now they have a middle school or high school that has had an IEP from kindergarten, but they are not reading. So are we more comfortable saying dyslexia? Are the psychologists more comfortable saying, okay, we are identifying characteristics of dyslexia? And Gerald, you mentioned the mandate. We, look, we, because then my other hat is advocating here in Maryland, and we were able to get legislation passed where all schools in Maryland will screen children for reading failure, starting in kindergarten. So we were able to get that. But I just want to put it out there that we are okay saying this is identification of dyslexia, zero nine SLD, and here are the interventions that we have to get this child reading.
You know, it's very key. Some of the things that you just pointed out, it's just telling, but it's amazing. So if you look at some of the recent numbers, one in every five student is characterized as dyslexic. Okay? Which makes you want to take a close look at individual school systems to make sure that school districts are analyzing referral data appropriately. You also have to look at that relationship in terms of, Derek had mentioned, black students. You know, 15% of black students have ADHD. Now, when you look at the relationship of ADHD and dyslexia, that speaks again to what I was talking about as far as intersectionality. And Deborah mentioned systemic racism. You know what? It becomes sort of a covert systemic racism. No one is overtly trying to do these types of things, but just because of the nature or the struggles that the student faced, they automatically assume, well, this student must have a disability. Otherwise, the student will be performing on par with his or her peers. So I think it's something that kind of occurs just based on people's cultural identity. Unfortunately, that's linked to student performance. And so there are bigger issues to tackle aside from the fact that we have students who are experiencing learning loss. But when we have people who are misdiagnosed, that is a true injustice because what happens is the student gets further and further behind. And so trying to really accelerate instruction becomes impossible whenever the student is not getting the appropriate interventions. Winifred, you mentioned specific interventions. You know, like the standard dyslexia protocols that we utilize, the Orton-Gillingham approaches and all of those types of things. Yes, they are targeted to be able to provide support for students with dyslexia, but it's just good reading interventions, you know? And so those reading interventions can be utilized across disabilities. And so what happens, because this is kind of like a soapbox for me, trying to make a determination as to when dyslexia requires specially designed instruction. And so I don't know how much more specially designed your instruction can be aside from the standard dyslexia protocol. So if I'm a parent, I would rather my child be able to read. I don't care if they qualify for special education or not. If they have dyslexia, I would rather they receive their instruction and support from someone who's a COWP or someone who's trained in these Orton-Gillingham approaches that are specific to dyslexia, rather than having my child go to a special education resource classroom with a teacher who has not been trained on those specific interventions. Now, what does that mean for us as educators? We have to look at our special education teachers much more holistically and make sure that they are getting specific training in these Orton-Gillingham approaches so that there is no disconnect with regard to the services that a student receives. Because I think it will be an injustice if a student is making progress in terms of dyslexia and now all of a sudden they qualify for special education and IEP committee says you need specially designed instruction. And when you look at IDEA, when you start talking about specially designed instruction. Now, it's interesting, in Texas, the Texas Education Agency just received a memo from OSEP regarding the determination as to whether or not a standard dyslexia protocol can be considered specially designed instruction. And they basically said, there's no reason why it can't be considered a specially designed instruction. And so that has resulted in additional guidance for school systems to move forward in making the determination. I know one of the things that we're doing here in San Antonio ISD, and I think many of the districts in the state of Texas are doing is now the dyslexia evaluations are going through special education. So we're doing a full individualized evaluation. And in that way, we can make determinations. But those LSSPs are trained to be able to really make that identification clear. And I think that's going to go a long way with regard to helping parents become much more familiar with regard to what their students actually need in terms of the suspected disability.
You just led us right into the next question, right? Because during this work and trying to advocate for my daughter and help other parents, I switched careers and I became director of admissions of a special education school. Yes, I see y'all looking. I just went all in, right? She's my only baby. So I got to read reports from all across the state of Maryland from psychologists and the terminology used to describe behavior for little white boys and little black boys, right? I look at the numbers of specifically Baltimore City. That's where I live. I'm very big in that community. And I'm looking at the number of non-public placements from Baltimore City. And we are almost, what, 90% African-American? But those non-public placements, 90% go to others, right? There's a school right up the street from me. It's Oasis. I pass it every day. It's called St. Elizabeth School. That school costs about $90,000 a year. That school has an outside playground on the inside, the kiddos with sensory issues. Now, I've done work to try to get free SAT prep and different services here in Baltimore City. And we know that lead, and I was actually a teacher in Baltimore City. So we know that we have kiddos that have learning disabilities developmentally delayed because of the lead. I mean, I've helped teachers pass Praxis who had lead. You know, I'm from Baltimore City. I can't pass this test, right? So I'm just very passionate and I'm looking at this special education school and I'm like, wow, everybody in here knows how to help these children, right? Everybody in this building. So I said, well, why, why we don't have that in our schools, right? Not just special educators, but our general educators. So I started digging and I started looking into teacher prep. Then I said, Wendy, you and your ADHD superpower can't do it all, right? So we partnered with Morgan State University. They are partially funding this podcast. And I wrote up the grant to talk about the health disparities around undiagnosed folks who then develop mental health issues because of depression, anxiety, and so forth. And so now through that collaboration, Morgan State University is the only, HBCU-only college and university in the state of Maryland who is seeking IDA accreditation at their undergraduate teacher prep program. Nobody is doing that. And recently I was invited to meet the new superintendent here in Maryland. And I had about six questions and I pulled one and the one that spoke to me was teacher prep. I said, okay, what is MSDE doing? Maryland State Department of Education going to do, partner with our local school districts to hold higher education to the fire around teacher prep? Because we are spending money that, look, we, we, our school districts, are spending money that we don't have to retrain these teachers, right? So what are you guys doing to partner to reach into higher education? So I'm doing it by segue. I'm getting in there, pointing them to the right direction, making the connections that they need. Then I go back and I focus on parents, right? And educating them and helping students. But, you know, we've got to talk about teacher prep programs because these teachers, I remember my daughter's second grade teacher. She said to me, oh, Logan has dyslexia. I don't know how to help a child with dyslexia. And she was a teacher. She was an educator. And so, you know, there's a meme that goes around on social media that says, it's not a special education problem, it's a general education problem. Because most of them are in general ed because they're not being identified. So speak to that a little for me.
I'll start because this is my passion as well. So our office works very closely with our human capital office that provides a lot of support around teacher recruitment, teacher training. We've also partnered with some of our universities and colleges. And what I do appreciate is they always call me in to say like, what can we do? When we're talking about supporting students with disabilities. And so I said, well, then we need to, as we're working with our colleges and universities to look at teacher prep, not just focus on special educators, but also on those general educators. Because we know our students are in inclusive environments. So what happens oftentimes is what I heard Gerald say and I heard LaDerrick say earlier, is that when a student is identified, we put them in more restrictive environment. So then we start pulling them out. So we pull them out for resource. So we put them in a self-contained class, train our general educators to be able to provide those reading interventions. So I heard you talked about Orton-Gillingham. When I first came back to City Schools, because I went to another district for a few years and came back to City Schools, I said, we need to get our staff trained here in central office, but then also work with principals so that we can get our general educators trained also on these reading strategies. Because they are good reading strategies for all students. And so I think in working with our higher ed partners, really understanding teacher prep, but also teacher prep on how to work with diverse student populations. So Morgan, and shout out to Morgan, that's where I received my doctorate from, but also our other teaching universities. So here in Maryland Towson, there's a large number of students that graduate every year from Towson that go into teaching. But do they understand how to teach all of our children? And I'm just going to, you know, the topic today is black and dyslexia. Do they know how to teach our black children? You know, they come in, there's some implicit biases. There's some lower expectations, but really understanding how to teach our children, how to interact with our children, how to understand different cultures, different parts of our city look different and feel different and how to interact with our children. So one, we're not misdiagnosing. Two, we're not over-identifying. But three, that we are providing opportunities and services for all of our children. So this is something that I am just really focusing on is our teacher prep program. But you're absolutely correct. I hear all the time from our general educators, Deborah has an IEP and I just don't know what to do with it. Or even Deborah has a 504. And now I don't know what to do with it. So she needs to have something more and then she needs to go over to this place so that she can get these services and supports. Whereas how about we equip all of our teachers to be able to support all of our students?
Yep.
And I'm conscious of time and I do want to save some time for questions and comments from the audience. I just, before we go to that, I just want to say thank you for this. This has been a great conversation. When Lauren presented us with this opportunity to talk with y'all, I think Winifred and I were both excited. We've had advocates, we've had parents, we've had people who have the lived experience being both black and dyslexic. Winifred, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we've had any district level leadership on the podcast as of yet.
Not yet, because shout out to these folks that are talking to us today. You got to be mindful of what you say, what you can say, what you're representing. You know, with some districts are on the fence. Folks aren't that comfortable being on a panel, you know, answering questions. So those are in the vault for now.
And yeah, and I like Gerard, like this podcast is supposed to be a place where people come and stand on their soapboxes. So I appreciate all the passion everyone has brought. I would love it if, you know, if we can do it in a somewhat organized way, if people just could just unmute themselves and then we'll take questions from there if folks are all right with that.
I would just like to thank Winifred for her work. Winifred, I'm part of IDA at the local level here. And I've been fighting the fight for a long time for all children. And to get people to understand that you can make a difference for every child by providing these types of instruction has been a hard road. And I appreciate what you just said about at the university level, for sure.
Thank you. Thank you. I went to IDA in 2019. That's where I met LaDerrick. And when I tell you, oh my God, day one, I was so overwhelmed. Day one, I was so overwhelmed, the information, the networking, the people, the information. And then I thought, wow, I don't see too many people that look like me. But that like really pushed me and said, hey, wait a minute, something's not right here. So I appreciate it. And actually, I had a little parent scholarship to help me from IDA. So that's how I got there. My, actually, IDA and the parents here in Baltimore Venmo'd me, told me, we want you to go. We want you to get that information. We want you to get that information and bring it back to us. So that's how I got there. I stayed in a little Airbnb by myself and, and everyone just embraced me. I didn't feel alone. So yeah, thank you so much.
And just for the, the audience, that's the International Dyslexia Association. We try to, we try to unravel the alphabets when we.
I'm so sorry. I didn't do that.
It's all good. All right. Who else? Anybody else? Questions or comments?
Hello, uh, my name is Cynthia Velazquez and I work as a special education administrator in Portland Public Schools. Thank you so much for this conversation. I went immediately to your website and I'm sending some suggestions because you mentioned some, uh, you're talking about uh, engaging with families. I don't know if you've read any of Dr. Beth Harry and Dr. Lydia Ocasio-Stottemberg's work from the University of Miami. And I, I sent you some contact information. They recently wrote a book called Meeting Families Where They Are. And both of them, they specialize in engaging with families, but they're both black mothers of children who experience um, and receive special education services. And uh, they came and spoke to Portland Public Schools. They are amazing speakers. And their book centers on race and dis- and uh, disability and I highly recommend it. And another person I highly recommend to folks is uh, Dr. Shamika Stanford from uh, Howard University as well. And I also sent that in the contacts into, to your information on this, Winston.
Thank you, thank you.
And uh, Dr. Stanford speaks about the language we use in reports and being cognizant of the language we use because how it shapes. Basically, what are we doing? It's like the violence of the language we use when we describe a, a child, a young person. And what does that do in coming at it from a, a lens of equity? And I just wanna thank you. And then the last thing is myself and a colleague of mine, we created a multilingual special education toolkit where we use visuals to explain the special education process. And also categories um, of eligibility to families to make things more visual. And that's for our English-speaking families. And um, we have it also in the five top languages in my district. I'd be happy to share a copy of that. We presented at the, the American Speech and Hearing Association a couple of weeks ago. And uh, we did virtually, well, I did virtually in Washington DC, but I'd be happy to share that resource with you.
Please do. The first book you mentioned, someone uh, recently sent me that on IG. So definitely, yep, definitely.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I'd be happy. Dr. Beth Harry is uh, wonderful. She'd be happy to come onto your podcast. She's amazing, amazing speaker. So I just wanted to, to mention that. And yes, I'll put it in the chat, but thank you.
Thank you so much.
I just wanna thank everyone for their contribution. You know, this is season one for us. And, and we're gonna go out with a bang. So we're gonna get more funding. I just know we are. And we're gonna get sponsorships and we're gonna uh, be able to continue to have what I like to call unfiltered conversations, right? Things that we wanna say and culturally are hard for us to say, and we just don't have these open conversations. But with everything going on in the world, the pandemic, the unrest we had, you know, it had given me the permission to focus on folks that look like me, right? It had given me the permission to do this work. And so I appreciate everyone who contributes. And I would not be here. This podcast would not be here. My nonprofit would not be here if it had not been for people who don't look like me. I got help. I got access because I went in front of people who don't look like me, right? So I just wanna thank everyone for their contribution. For the 115 people that I counted that was here enjoying this, who, who will be, you know, a part of this podcast, cause this is something special and this is something that, you know, I created because I saw a need. And I had a lot of opponents and a lot of people who didn't want me to do this work. Why do you need to call it black and dyslexic, right? And so I just wanna thank you all. Thank you so much for having us and it's been my pleasure.
Thank you so much.
Tune in next week where we'll continue to bring you lived experiences and more unfiltered conversations with experts in the field around all things black and dyslexic. Make sure you subscribe and follow the Black and Dyslexic Podcast where we educate, empower and equip black and underrepresented minorities. The Black and Dyslexic Podcast is partially funded by Morgan Cares and the Center for Urban Health Disparities Research and Innovation awarded by the National Institute of Minority Health and Health Disparities. The Black and Dyslexic Podcast is sponsored by Dyslexia Advocacy Incorporated, a 501(c)(3) charitable organization located in Baltimore City, Maryland, whose mission is to equip parents of children with dyslexia and other language-based learning disabilities with the necessary tools to help their children become successful readers. You can find them on the web at www.soulalcannread.org.